I'm at the year busy with interview, we're in the middle of our open enrollment for insurances. And again, the budgets out to the teachers shortly, hopefully by the end of this week. So they start putting in their orders for next year. A lot of contracts, whether their personnel or projects, so a lot of stuff is going on right now. One of the trustees of the trust fund came in Helen Jones came in the other day because what they're looking, so they're trustees in Woodstock, but there are trustees. And what they're looking to do in Woodstock is move some of the investments right now to the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool. And what that is, it's a pool for municipalities, it's it's kind of like another place you can put your money. When I first started here at the school, we used it a lot. More often just kind of moving money in and out because the interest rates get better interest. Right now, the interest rates on our regular, on the regular trust fund accounts is pretty next to nothing. But in, but in the habit of deposit investment pools, they're good rate, rate right now. And we don't get into those funds that much, you know, maybe once or twice a year. So they like to, they're gonna work on moving the Woodstock ones and they asked us, and in our investment policy, it says that the investments or of capital and trust fund accounts will be left to the discretion of the town of Woodstock trustees of the trust fund after review by the school board. So just wanted to bring this to your attention. I think it's a good idea because again, we don't let me get into the, but it is very liquid. You can move it right back in to the trust fund regular accounts and we need to access that. But in the meantime, we can
And then there's no limit how many times you can move it. So no, there's none. I think it's a great idea.
So do we, do we need to take any action as a board in order to put that in place? Or is it just sort of like? We've, we've now reviewed it and it's up to them.
Policy says, after the view of the, I mean, if you want to take a vote that you're okay with them doing that, I'm not sure what that vote would be, but yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it. It needs to have one. I mean, I guess.
Okay, we'll actually gonna be reviewing this policy later.
I think we, we looked at that one recently.
We have to do it every year. We were talking about it, Sharon pulled it out, said, let's do it now before we forget, before we usually do it. Close of the summer, yeah.
Is that it for you then?
Yes.
As we know, you all set? Speak up.
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Yeah, might as well.
Okay, the LEA agreement is in the blue folder. Negotiations was completed early spring. And it needs to be, it will be signed by the two negotiators of the board and the chair.
So a, you have like a copy that you all want us to sign.
The deputites were in the office, ready to sign. So eventually like the spot, you do that. Remember the trick of that is the dot, what the ink.
Yes, lay them out.
Lay them out. Don't touch the back of the design. And then we have to send for you.
I smudged somebody's one year. That's why I went first. She's like, she goes, they're here. I'm like, oh, I'll be right there. Let's smudge it anyway.
Uh, the ice cream social is set up for next Tuesday. So the social will begin at 6:30 and the band will be playing at 7:00.
And the Buschikov is looking for desserts.
Yeah. Do the desserts have to be individually wrapped? This is a question that came up today. It says so on Tom under see email, it says to have them individually wrapped. And we were wondering if that was something left over from COVID that we don't have to do anymore.
Yeah, I don't think maybe we need to anymore. It could have been left over. Um, and just want to thank the board for all of their full contributions for lunch today.
How'd it go today? Excellent.
Greatly appreciated. That's just amazing. They'll be on set for a few days.
Awesome.
That's very good.
Good, good.
Okay, teacher contracts are ready to sign. And let's see, those are things I can do. We're just, the administration is, is looking into that. I had a grammar grammatical error in my memo. So I apologize. I didn't correct it here, but the administration is researching. But anyway, uh, for the details on that, the Gaga pit.
So I got, yeah.
Looking into Primax and whatnot, we'll give that information.
Oh, you have Primax because we, the town has Primax. We put a Gaga pit up at the cank and they said, no, you're fine.
Yeah, well, they just gave us, we did recharge them. They gave us a list of things that we should be looking out for maintenance wise, things like that. And
But that's, yeah, it goes into like the playground equipment.
Right, as far as inspections. Yeah, we usually do.
Put it on your regular, yep.
Yeah, but we just checked with them and they gave us a good list.
Yeah.
So we'll forward that to
You should, that should be the same list like for your playground.
It is, although he did say it's not technically playground equipment, but but anyway, it's, it's not really gonna be next to our playground out here. It's gonna be out front anyway. But anyway, they gave us a really good list of files. So we'll have that. So whatever they
Perfect to see to that.
And we will give that information to adapt and then they will come up with a proposal so that you will actually have something solid to look at. Testing is, is happening this week. That's it. Everything else, all the memorandum of understanding was, has been came back from the attorney. We did meet the, the chief and myself met and we reviewed it. If that is also in your
Is this the one with the attorney's corrections? Yes, okay. Is this finalized, signed and or?
Yes, it's ready to be signed. Both parties, well, the chief and myself looked at it after we met first. Then we went through and said little things that we needed, might want to be revised. We sent it to the attorney. That they looked at it and said, yeah, that's okay. Did whatever. And then now it's, we made those revisions. We looked at it again and now it's ready.
Excellent.
Uh, summer school programs for the students are being finalized and, and staff are being notified so that anybody wants to be involved in that. And the minute meeting minutes for the facilities committee is in the board packet. We also have a tech meeting coming up on May 30th at 2:45. And the tech plan will be reviewed at that time. It's a three year plan. It used to be a five year plan, but things changed so quickly that we don't do this. We need to do three years. And that's it for now. Everything else will fall in with the agenda.
I had a question about the SRO agreement. It's, because it specifically says, shall they assign to cover middle high school? Does that mean that they don't come up to the elementary at all for anything?
Well, it's funny because that was one of the, one of the questions I had, but on the next sentence, I believe it adds.
There is no next sentence. That's D out of A, B, C, D.
What page is it on?
This is, it's under two D.
I did ask that.
Oh, so it says unless otherwise noted.
Right, unless otherwise.
So that would cover that. And then
And I asked about that and him instead of course it's gonna be in.
Excellent. And then three A with the hours, it doesn't give any, um, this makes it pretty specific. It doesn't give you the option to, you know, come in late on Tuesday so they can stay for the dance on Friday or something. Do you know what I mean? It, it just says school hours. It doesn't say games or dances or outdoor activities or
What number was that one?
Three A. Cause I know that was one of the things that was like
Where is this? I'm looking at the band contract.
Okay, what was the one that you wanted?
Three A.
Yeah, and you wanted
It's just like dances or games or I mean, the, the officer is going to be bound by a union contract. So hours are very specific. So if he's going to be at the school for 40 hours a week, but we'd like him to attend or him or her, whatever to, or they want to attend a dance or homecoming or a basketball game or something, which would mean they'd have to modify their daily hours. So they don't go over their union contracted hours.
It's a good question. If they do go over, who's responsible for late overtime?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Right. So it should have something in there that
Maybe rather than a seven, yes.
Three, yeah.
Maybe rather than like a seven to three, it's more of 35 hours a week, 40 hours a week, something like that.
Yep. And, and specifically put in there for, you know, games, dances, school functions, after school functions, something to that. So they're not limited. Um, and they can, because it would be great if you get somebody that's really gets along well with the kids and and, you know, they'd want them at games, dances, functions, et cetera.
And I know it's a little tricky because of, he is like a sworn or the, they would be like a sworn officer and sort of subject to supervision by the chief, but it doesn't really leave a whole lot of like oversight by them. By district or the board about like the, the officer's activities. It's really just left up to and I mean, there's, there's some talk about cheated command. Yeah, but this basically just to talk about like they're, they're subject to the, to the chain of command by, of the chief and the police, but basically they're just gonna communicate with the districts and so that sort of puts them in a position to know operating independently as the chief feels is appropriate in the school without a whole lot of say of the district or the board. And I, and I just think that we need to retain some discretion that if somebody's gonna be working in our building, then we we, we maintain some oversight in some capacity to direct what they're doing, what they're not doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rather than just saying, you know, and this is not as, I, I think there was a pretty negative experience with the last chief and, and the way that the, the SRO played out. I don't expect that that's gonna be the case with the current chief, but it sounds like in sort of before my time that that, that relationship broke down and there was, and, and there was problems as a result of that. And so I, you know, I think the district and the board needs, and the, and the administration need to retain some discretion as to, to the, what's going on with the SRO. If they're gonna be operating in our building, it shouldn't just be sort of like an independent person doing their own thing. Yeah.
What they're required to do?
Yeah.
But that's pretty extensive.
I, no, and I, I, I understand that. My, my
And then it's, it's the chain of command that you
Yeah, well, not just that, but there's, there, you know, if there's any question about whether or not they're adequately doing what they're supposed to be doing, or if they're doing it in a way that we feel is the best, sort of the student and safety of our kids, you know, we should have some say and how, and how that person is operating.
I haven't been able to see it, but is there an evaluative piece to it? Who does the evaluative?
No, that's what
There really doesn't appear to be. And if there is some like discussion about what happens if there's some, if it breaks down to the point where we need to like talk about reassigning the officer, but I, you know, I think that there's, there's a lot in between there. There's a lot in between like perfect performance and needing to get the person out of the school, you know, where we could be providing feedback and, and helping direct the, the way that that person is operating in, in the buildings.
I agree. It could be, it could be an agreement between the administration and the chief. Not so much the officer itself.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right. I mean, we, I don't know that we necessarily are like saying, this is what you need to do right now. Or, or, or on a day to day basis, but I think there should be baked into here some level of oversight about what's happening. We don't have anybody else in the building that we don't have
Right.
Control over. And I think that there should be some, we should retain some discretion to sort of say what is or what isn't going to happen in our, in our bodies.
Makes sense.
And I know that that's, that that's gonna be limited just based on the
Yeah.
Laws about who's, who has what say or
That's why I said
Certified.
Chief and the admin, not the officer and the admin, but yeah. Yeah.
And if we could just sort of figure out something like that. Or at least maybe get the chiefs in.
We want to be able to give you feedback on this situation and what the best way to do it.
Awesome.
All right, I think we're ready for the
Yay.
My name is Theorie Weeden. I think everybody knows who I am. I am the yellow coordinator for the district as well as a Spanish teacher. And I'd like to present to JJ and Cameron Claremont, who did their first ever electrical internship in the middle of high school. It was awesome. We've been trying to do this for years and they were very simply said, we're gonna do it. So this was our first time of electrical internship and they would like to present for you all to.
Like Chris said, we had a chance to do an electrical internship and this is our tenement opportunity, Jeremy and I. What is the yellow? Yellow is a chance for students to be given extra credit for something else to do within the school building, outside of the school building. Well, hopefully everyone has done a good job finding opportunities for us outside of the school building and have different experiences that we are maybe interested in future. Our tenement opportunity consists of working for master electrician Tom Saborn. And he took his time out of his day and his employees' day to teach us electrical. This is our second question. So what we are gonna be answering in our slideshow. What is the role of the general electrician in the way of the new Hampshire? And what are the, what role does safety and general maintenance play in the day and large in the electrical?
Pass, I'm gonna Pass the safety. One of the most important things that Tom and his crew taught us is safety. Once we get to the job, we find out our task. We make sure that we have our protective glasses if we're cutting holes or drilling into a drywall. Uh, we also want to make sure that power is off and any wires that could be live and we're touching. When we get there to the site, the supervisor that we are working with for the day gives us what we're doing, obviously, and then we do that task. And we are overseen by who our supervisor might be. It might be Tom, Kevin, or one of his workers. A lot of things that we are tasked with doing are pulling wire, installing outlets and light, drilling holes, putting the covers on the outlets themselves and doing the same thing with lights. And wire cleanliness and neatness is important in the electrical field. It helps keep the job site organized, easier to locate the tools that we need and the equipment. Clients tend to be on the job and see the and see the cleanliness, neatness of their property. They place them out. Keeps the wire neat and easy to access. And then here we have an electrical panel. And it shows three steps of it being completed. The picture all the way to the left is right at the beginning. The one in the middle is the one I'm constantly done. And then on the, the third one shows it all the way. You can see that there's a big difference compared to the beginning. And then on the all the way to the right is one of Mr. Saborn's trailers. And you can just tell how needed it is with all the ladders and the electrical equipment.
That's good to have learned. The past couple of months, Tom and school have given us the opportunity to leave the building Monday, Wednesday and Friday for a couple hours to teach us electrical skills. We've learned how to pull wires to houses, how to put wires and breakers neatly and label them the right way. How to wire, shirt the wire so it'll be able to be used to put in outlets, light fixtures, anything like that. How to drill holes in wood safely. And the importance of cleanliness and neat work. And one of Tom's biggest things is cleanliness and neatness and just keeping everything looking nice for the clients. So they know that we're treating their stuff well and treating their stuff well as well. A couple of different jobs. On our first job site, the first day, you can find us over to the newly built storage units across from the Woodstock PD. First, we started talking about safety because that's one of the biggest things. Wearing glasses when needed and making sure all the wires are off. Then we got to do a little more hands-on stuff at the job. Our discharge is tasked with pulling MC wire through the buildings. And also pulling wire for security cameras. And in the next slide, I'll show a picture of MC wire and a different wire. Tom does two different kinds of electrical work, residential and commercial. Residential, electricians work on people's homes, providing services such as inspections, rewiring, repairs and general maintenance. Commercial, the electricians work on businesses, factories, commercial buildings, like apartments, hotels and stores, units like we were doing a couple of weeks ago. On this picture, it shows the MC wire which is used in like commercial buildings. So rodents or anything don't get to the wire. It's like a metal sheeting that protects it. And then just a couple of pictures of JJ and I working. And then there's a picture of like, I think it's called the CAT five or CAT six, if I'm wrong, wire. Or like the security cameras and I keep that cord for them. And then JJ pulling it through the storage units to get to the other side. So all of it has power and so you can set up the security on it.
Um, other jobs that we've done, we have worked on multiple houses on South Peak, multiple houses on Loom. South Peak, South Peak Base Camp, the tent there. A house on Coolish Falls and a house on Route three just passed Donovan Hughes, um, excavation for So for this, we had to, for an academic piece, we had to connect it to competencies as well. And so this is our few ways we connected it. For exercising flexibility and willingness to compromise. While feeding wire through the different pieces of wood on the wall, we came to a stopping point because it might be hard to see from there, but there's like a 90 degree angle that is formed with the two pieces of wood. So we couldn't get around that. And we had to drill like a hole into the wood. So we were able to bring the wire through. And then here we have to cut the wall using an oscillating tool. And we obviously had to wear, I had to wear my safety glasses because the drywall coming out will just scare into your eyes. And I connected this to taking risks because if I had cut too deep or in the wrong spot, it could have messed up all the wiring or then we have to redo everything.
Uh, the third one is 3.3 acceptance and the roles. For this one, we're in a garage that was, uh, one of the use for like steam equipment. So they could put their stuff in. I'm pretty sure there were people that were up here in the winter, the loom. Uh, this garage is on two different circuits or home runs. And I said, I was, this was one of JJ's projects. He was supposed to drill holes in the wood for two circuits and, uh, we were able to wire the two different home runs when he was done. And this connects to acceptance of the roles because we are given tasks that we should be able to do. And we complete them. And after everything that we do, everything that we do, Tom is a crew oversees everything, make sure it's all done. So nothing can get messed up or ruin houses or something. 1.3 demonstrate ownership of work. Our rough is when we're wiring and doing all the work we need for our house that is still being built. We learned a lot about the valves like these. For example, when we first hit the site, you can bring in light so you can see everything because obviously no electricity house yet. All the tools that we need and the blueprint. So you know what's going on in the house. Uh, once it's completed, you grab all the wire we need for the day. So enough for the vehicle and get in a bunch of different stuff. When pulling wire, you have to make sure that you do not damage any of the sheeting or the plastic stuff around it. It doesn't mess up the wires. JJ and I pulled many wires where they needed to be. And made sure when you're doing outlets, that they're about a foot outside of the outlet. So once the house is ready to put in the outlets, that there's enough room and this is to make sure that you have enough wire to do the outlet to plug at some time. And this is one of many ways to demonstrate ownership of our work. And then here's a couple of pictures. So the first one is an outlet that we did in our wire. And you can see there's about a foot of extra wire outside of it. So once it comes time to put outlets in the second picture, you have enough to wire the outlets. And then the second, the next couple of thirty pictures are for a light fixture. This is about the same thing. You have the, the wire probably about a foot. So we can get all the wire situated and put it back into the box. And so all the wire is done, then you go to the house and make sure everything is good and they do them on the back though.
How would you have supported our college dreams?
Um, I'm excited to attend Columbus State in a birthday in the fall. While I won't be participating in trade school like JJ will be, I'm grateful for the opportunity of interaction with becoming an electrician and thank Ms. Weeden and Tom for giving us the opportunity and the school for letting us do this.
And I'm excited to have, uh, be attending La Codia Trade School in the fall with the financial support of Cleveland Electric. And I'll be working for Tom this summer.
I know for many ways.
Uh, final thought. Over the past year, we learned a lot of information about, um, being an electrician and different things in our future. Um, when we work in Tom, we also see all the trades around us like plumbing and all that stuff. If we weren't interested in electrical, we can see everything. And we learned a lot of lessons about being an adult and making sure that you're doing everything very well, efficient and doing things on time. This program was able to let us learn new things. It wasn't traditional schooling and schoolwork and stuff like that. Allowed us to get a jumpstart on some of the things we may need to learn in the future. And as a group, JJ and I, we wanted to thank everyone at Saborn Electric for taking time out of their day to teach us new things. And we also want to thank Linwood and Mrs. Weeden for coordinating this opportunity for us. Thank you.
Sounds like an amazing opportunity. I believe you guys realize how fortunate you are. That's pretty amazing. Good job. Man, the presentation was awesome as well. JJ, did you, did you know that you were, you wanted to do electric before you, before you did this program?
I had an interest at the, at the end of last year and that's when we figured, or she thought about the idea of working for Tom a couple of days a week. And once this year came around, she was like, I think we're gonna be able to do this. And I just, I just wanted to do it from there. It was always an attractive thing to me.
Fantastic.
And it didn't, uh, this experience didn't put you off from, from going into the electrical field? That's good.
It's likely it'll be a fun time, you know?
That's awesome.
Have a good career out of it.
Yeah.
And Cam, did you want, think you wanted to be an electrician or did you just want this as
Yeah, it's something that I thought about doing and I wanted to test out with this opportunity. See if I still want to do it. It's not something that I've like knocked off the table. But I just want to go, I just have, and I want to go to college and get a degree and maybe play in a basketball team. And then after that, I can see I want to go back to working with Tom or do something like that.
I also think one of the opportunities with yellow is to find out that kids don't want to do something. Other than jumping into college and becoming a vet, then find out you don't want to be a vet. This gives them the opportunity to say, you know what? This isn't for me. So there's, there's two sides of it that you know in the brain.
Yeah.
The other thing I'm noticing is when I listen to your, your thing is you told us a lot about
The other thing I'm noticing is when I listen to your, your thing is you told us a lot about electrical, but you also told us a lot about being an employee. And I think that's another thing you're picking up is a lot of how to be an employee and how to take direction sort of skills, but they're not always intuitive. So I think that's another thing I, I see you picking up.
There's a lot of things that Tom and like Kevin taught us throughout the time there, like you were always choose like do a time card just to write down what you're doing today, like what we'd be doing in a real life situation when we get older. So there were just some things that we did that are definitely gonna help us later.
Fantastic.
And, and you know, when you think about electrical work or plumbing work or the trades in general, some of that stuff can be intimidating. So you know, we're thinking about doing it for your own house in the future or something like that. So feel like it gives you a sense of like, this is something that I could do, even if I don't plan on do going into the business, you know? You get sort of the sense that like, you know, if I have the right information and you know, the right mentor, I could sort of handle all of that sort of stuff. Well, great. Thank you guys.
Just as a demonstration, you guys could check these lights before you.
I'd like to make one moment if I could.
Yeah.
I'd really like to thank the school board, the school, um, these guys, Mrs. Wheaton, the support of their parents. Um, I don't think people realize how important this program is, not just for electricians. Um, nee- meanwhile, huge shortage of people working with their hands. Some of the best paying jobs there are. Um, to get guys interested to start looking at it and learn adulting uh while they're in high school is pretty cool. Uh, these guys knocked it out of the park. They were pleasant. They were great. They showed up when they said they would. There was no monkey business unless my guy started it. But we showed you that fun and enjoy the good work. You can make a good living basically anywhere you work, if you can work with their hands. And college is always an option for everyone, right? I mean, um, you know, I did it at a two-year school, the same school that JJ wanted. And uh, to have the, the proof is, is here that this, this works. Cause now JJ's coming on board with us. Going to school in the Corneo, which is a great technical school, two years, he's going to be out. We'll pick up the tab for schooling. And then he can work with us for a few years and then test for his German's list.
Okay.
Um, and Ms. Wheaton, when, when she took this on, she called the state for guidance and they said, well, this really doesn't exist. So to have her take this thing by the horns and say, you know, these small schools and these kids need the same attention as the big school. And to have this, this is a, a huge thing for her. Um, she sent me some paperwork. We went over it. We, we, we drew some notes. And, and she made this happen. And that's absolutely amazing. I really, really hope that it expands from electrical to vets, to my, my daughters in one for teaching. Um, this is a great opportunity. I really hope everyone keeps supporting it and thank her so much for over.
Thank you.
And Tom, thank you.
Yeah, I just.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
One of those uh, they, they came to me a few years back and I actually declined um because of the time that it takes. And fortunately, we're in a better position with five employees where it wasn't going to kill us to have the two guys come. And I know there's a huge demand for this stuff. So if we can get anyone interested in any trade, they saw plumbing, they saw HVAC, they saw plumbing, they saw root and they saw.
Priceless. That's priceless. Yeah.
It's good stuff. I appreciate it.
Yeah. No, thank you, Tom. Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Wheaton.
Great job.
That's awesome. I love that you do that. We had um, we've had a couple of kids years ago who came to the show. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
We can get more kids in the graves through our yellows.
And have the moss on. Yeah.
All right. I think uh, were you running with your?
I was everything else.
Okay. So then Mr. Griffin now.
Um, you've basically had the report. I just wanted to say that we're kind of emphasizing a lot on testing the age, testing the SAS testing. Middle school, preliminaries all looked really good with reading. Um, the senior trip, trip is this weekend. And uh, we will be starting to schedule students for classes next Monday. Um, and then I just wanted to give an extra special thanks to all the townspeople and businesses who helped contribute to um some, some uh prizes or something. I guess, rapid prizes for the teachers this week. They've been like incredible.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really, really nice.
Really awesome that they've extended to people. So I want to make sure we say thank you to them as well.
Great.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you to, to everyone that contributed.
We appreciate teachers. We have great teachers. Good to appreciate you guys.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
I'm the Taste, Taste of the World Festival. I heard great things about it from my students. Yeah. Oh, gosh.
If you had a chance to come, it was wonderful. Kids were present through here. These huge plates of things that the families that presented. We're really proud of, of what they're able to do and contribute and show the kids and showcase and had some good conversations with those families. And uh, it was, it was really wonderful. And so we'll look at like the more traditions to kind of start. And so we're already talking about what this could look like next year and so forth. So maybe every other year or something, but it was really a good way to embrace diversity within our community.
Yeah, they loved it. They loved it. They had a great time.
All right. Um, committee reports.
Uh, no, I just, I added that into the.
Okay. Um, nominations, recommendations, resignations?
Yes, I do have one nomination I could do now. The other nomination I'd go into non-public about.
Okay.
Uh, but the nomination I can do now is Dan Adams for the Digital Arts Communication Technology Teacher. Dan Adams is a, is a teacher who has been with us in the past. And he did leave this past year and worked in Wyndham. Uh, but he did want to come back again. That position was posted for a whole year. No people stopped here. Um, and uh, we were not able to get a, a person to come in and do that. So now we will have that position.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to um approve the nomination of Dan Adams, Dan Adams for the Digital Arts.
Communication Technology.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, any further discussion on that? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Uh, abstentions and then motion carries. And then uh, annual review of the investment policy. We can do that tonight.
Yeah.
I think we did that. Yeah.
In your packet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, it's something that we have to do at each year.
Yeah.
And that's more or less just looking it over and making sure that there's no new changes that we need to make.
Do you have any recommended changes or additions?
No, I mean, I think the worst of that, I'm sure that it is very, although it's two years ago.
Two years been.
It's also.
Well, I think that concludes our review. It's kind of that, that we don't really take any action generally. We just sort of look it over and make sure it's up to par. And safe grant bits.
Yeah, we're still waiting uh for two more vendors um to complete the, the forms and send in the information. So as soon as we get those, we'll throw that into politics.
Okay. Is that the, the Windows Doors entry projects?
Yeah. So we hope to have somebody by next meeting because again, we have to have it contracted here by the end of June.
Okay. And I thought there was um, was there like not many people?
There weren't many people to begin with. We reached out to a few more.
Oh, great.
After the last meeting, we're meeting them. Anyway, so we have a couple more vendors that are working on it. They came in and went through it last week with, with Mark.
Okay. Not something that DHI is interested in while they're here anyway. Or they've already got enough to do.
They're pretty busy.
Yeah.
Across the street.
Nothing on our new business. I see uh continuing business. Test their phones. Nothing new on that?
No, no, just the project's going, just filing all the paperwork as we go. There's a lot of steps along the way. But we have all the approvals, pre-approvals, approvals and everything when you stay.
Uh, strategic plan, anything under there?
We're not working on that. That's going well.
Um, I don't see any students here this evening. Uh, where the?
There was, there was two, two. They just.
Oh.
Oh.
Well, there is a softball game going on down at Frontfield. So that's probably more interesting.
No, it was elementary kids.
Oh.
And not only, oh, okay.
But maybe they might close away. That's what happens.
Yeah.
Uh, staff.
All right. I actually, sorry a bit for you, but I, I apologize and I run long.
We'd love to hear it.
Okay. So uh, Kristi Duris wanted to tell you that nine students participated in the Connect Suicide Prevention Training on the second. Uh, this training is sponsored by Naomi New Hampshire. Uh, the students are trained along with the support of an adult to help teach their peers through activities and sharing information about suicide prevention. Uh, Matt Manning, Jared Gunter, Aaron Bell, Kristi Duris, who was supporting adults who also attended the training. We're proud and impressed to have such motivation and willingness to lead from these students with a really difficult topic. Um, that we put in their training to work this spring in health classes and hopefully for the big bridge project. Um, a whole bunch of staff asked me to say thank you for all the appreciation stuff that's been going on this week. It's been really, really nice. I even managed to duck out of AP long enough to come back with a bowl full of everything from lunch today. So wonderful. Um, Jen Witcher, uh, the Lindwood High School rocked the night away at DJ Webb's uh to DJ Webb's tunes at the Woodstock Station last Saturday night. Prom was well attended. Approximately seventy students showed up. Uh, thank you Linda and Scott Maxiter for all the pictures that they took and helping out with chaperoning. Thank you to Mr. Souza and Ms. uh Cugno for helping to chaperone. Uh, thank you to Mr. Webb's too for DJing. The kids had a great time. And a big thank you to the Woodstock Station for hosting our, our high school, uh, providing a delicious dinner and a beautiful venue. Uh, Cohen Tuffel and Shannon Drappo were prom king and queen. Um, Aubrey Calder, uh, Casey Burrows, Seth Sealy, Kylie Clermont, Emma LeBlanc. And Addison Denadi were this year's prom court. Uh, student council will be organizing some spirit days and activities for the end of the year once graduation is over. Um, thank you for everyone's continued support of student council, trying to spread positive spirit. And I can tell you, they were talking about prom all first half of the week. Um, let's see, Mr. Bushway and Mr. Undersea. Um, this past Saturday, May sixth, twelve middle school students traveled to Gilbert High School to participate in the New Hampshire Music Educators Association North Country Middle School Music Festival. That's a hopeful. Um, students from ten North Country schools were selected to be part of a chorus and a band, each approximately fifty members. Uh, the schools received their music, the students received their music. Um, a number of weeks ago, they spent much time learning and practicing music with their home directors. On Saturday, under the direction of guest conductor, the root for her fall day. And the day was topped off with a performance for an enthusiastic audience of friends, relatives and music directors. Congratulations to the following students. Uh, Garrett Blake. Alan Kivinimi, uh, Gavin Fitzpatrick, Sawyer Kelly, Emma Clark, uh, Jesse Corey, Cam Anderson, Elia Baldinelli. Uh, Maisy Anderson, Tegan Boucher, Carver Krill, Chuck Poitras, and that's it. Um, and for me, um, we've been, the state passed a law a couple of years ago requiring this year's juniors and forward to pass the citizenship test as a graduation requirement. Um, we've been doing that. Um, a couple of seniors trialed it for me last year. Um, we've had great success for about three quarters of the way through the classes. Now I'm doing both juniors and sophomores. Uh, going forward, it's going to be a sophomore thing because we do civic sophomore year, the vast bulk of the, that's the civic. Um, at this point, we're at three quarters of the kids scored a nine year better. Uh, seventeen percent or so are in the eighties and eight, eight percent are in the seventies. I think those averages will hold. We've had nobody fail it yet. Um, and I, I don't see as we're going to have any big issues with it at all. So um, we'll do retakes if that's necessary, but that's, that's going fairly swimmingly. Um, and Heather and Leo wanted to celebrate the uh tasting the world event. Um, it was happening for the first time. Twenty families uh represented and cooked dishes and did presentations on where they're from. Um, students had a great time. Everybody got a little commemorative napkin. And there is a recipe collection um that they put together and you can email Heather if you're interested. I know I will be because I want Mrs. Wong's chicken recipe. Um, and that's what I've got for you.
Oh.
Is that Heather Krill?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Heather Krill and Leo. Yeah. Put that together.
Awesome.
Thank you. Um, community, Mr. Ham? Nothing tonight. All right.
I have something. Of course I always do.
Sure.
Um, we follow Littleton's s- schedule. We try to um coordinate with them as far as our school schedule calendar, correct?
Because of CT.
Right, because of CT. They, they're in the, the last day of school was the fourteenth. Their students go to school till the fourteenth and they have a half day. Staff is staying on to the twentieth. They had three snow days. Um, we had four, well, two snow days and two broken pipe issue days, whatever. Uh, how come our kids are going until the twentieth? Why can't our kids get out early, earlier than that?
They had the three snow days to make up.
They had three snow days. We had four, but they're going till Wednesday, the fourteenth. So I mean theoretically going that with.
I don't, I don't know why they can do that. I could certainly look it up.
Yeah.
We've had, when we have snow days, we make them up. That's why they ask us to put in five school days at the end of the year so that those could be snow days. So which is what we have to do every year on that calendar. And that's why we do that for the snow days. I don't know how Littleton did that. They could have had other activities throughout the year maybe that they were able to.
They petitioned.
Consider.
They petitioned. It was, they petitioned to get out.
I don't know.
And it was approved, um, but the staff is going till the twentieth. So it just doesn't make sense that we have to and they don't. And what do we need to do to make it work?
Being involved.
What do we need to do to make it work so that kids get out on the fifteenth or sixteenth?
I don't know. I'll have to, I'll have to look to see what their requirements are.
I mean, the, the staff's contracts is a staff contract, but the kids are not a staff contract. And I know in years past, we've had enough hours. I- i- instead of doing days, it was hours that make, made up enough of a difference so that they didn't have to go to school. But you know, it may not make up four snow days, but even one or two would be nice if the hours were.
Depends on how many hours we have left because of kids have had, I don't know if we had any uh delayed openings this year. That's a lot of minutes that we have. You know, when you're going by hours, they go.
I don't recall if we did or not. I know we had the two snow days.
At least one, at least one delay.
One.
Yeah, we did. We did hit two emergency.
Two delays.
Yeah.
Yeah, two emergencies.
So those are the bike burst days.
Students, yeah.
So, so we had two snow days to make up. And our original end of school was the fourteenth.
No, I think we had.
We had two snow days.
Yeah.
And the, I think the original was fifteen because it would not have to have to be fifteen. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
And there was three. There was two and then there was that.
So it'd be Friday, Saturday. Yeah, okay. Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Um, yeah.
Perfect. I can, I'll find out.
Thank you.
We gotta, that'll be one of the few questions for the new principal. How do you feel about snow days? How do you feel about driving in the snow? Uh, I know it's the bus stop.
Yeah.
I have another uh, I guess, calendar related thing.
Say it again.
Are you done?
Yeah, no, I just say we're gonna blame Mark for those studies. I mean, like even future ones. We're okay with that.
What he started, the the school calendar that is on the school website is great. But it's really hard to use. It's particularly on your mobile device and on your desktop. It is.
The whole website is hard to use.
I know, but if we could just get the calendar, because it has, we have, you know, this printout that you provide us is great because it gives you the list.
Right.
It would be great to be that kind of source of truth of, you just go to school homepage and there's the calendar. And there it is. But to, to find out like when the school board meetings are, when, in, in heaven forbid, there's more than one event on one day, it's.
You're right. Yeah, yeah. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're right, on the mobile device, it's nearly impossible to do anything on the school website. It, it's, you can't get to the SAU's link on your phone unless you stand on your head and.
It's a, I mean, it's a big project and problem to attack, but the, the calendar is an easy solution or I feel like for, for better community, communication and understanding most of the community is a, it can be.
Hmm.
The thing to remember, we paid pretty good money for that website too.
Oh, John Ham, just uh.
It's true. And it is a big task, but it's also been on, on the agenda for years. Like it's been an ongoing project for years.
We had a, we had a revamp that, that was done sort of in-house, traded that. And he addressed a lot of the issues, but I think there was still some challenges that remained at work.
Yeah.
Um,
all right.
Anything else? Then I will pull the board to go into non-public. Joe? Desmond?
Hi, Chad. Yes.
Yes.
Jay, yes. Is in, yes. Devin, yes.
We have to state this for personal.
Yes, uh, for uh
One day, whatever.
Discussions of matters likely to adversely affect the rep. Discussions of matters likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board.
Or just personnel. Personals will send some ninety-one A, something C.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, A three.
I think there, I think there will be.
Yes, there will be.